Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. January 12, 2023. Sioux City City Council. Test, test, one, two, three.
Go ahead, call the roll here.
Okay.
Here.
Janer?
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
All right, discussion of the water treatment plant facilities plan. Go ahead, Mr. Pingel, and lead this off.
Yeah.
We're dying to hear what you got to say. So what the city has decided, since we are experiencing rapid deterioration of the facility, we decided to go down the road of a facility plan. Facility plan is required by the state of Iowa for any major improvements for construction permitting and the ability to get financing for those projects. So the main idea behind the facility plan was to evaluate our existing infrastructure, see what it takes to get that up to standard, then take that, evaluate what it would cost to fix the existing wastewater treatment plant, basically build a brand-new plant on-site versus a greenfield plant. So when we got to that point, we decided to put out an RFP, which awarded to Hazen. So they've taken that over. They're going to present what they found and present some alternatives and go down the road of kind of what the city is requesting. After that, then, after they talk, we'll do questions and answers and go from there. So this is Gary from Hazen, Will and Dan.
Tom.
Thanks, Tom. My name is Gary Hobner. I manage the Midwest region for Hazen and Sawyer. I serve as the project principal for this project. What we want to talk to you tonight about is, as Tom mentioned, give you an overview of the facility plan that we did. We're going to talk about the drivers and goals. And what you're going to hear about is, you know, that we focused on odors, safety, reliability and growth. But in addition to that, keep in mind that this project really is, a lot of it's being driven by the regulatory requirements, too. And also, I think you're going to hear tonight that, you know, the city is committed to doing this project the right way. And that's the way IDNR expects it to be done as well. We're going to get into a little bit about how we looked at the existing facility and how we made the determinations we did. As Tom mentioned, the alternatives that we looked at comparing rebuilding the existing plant relative to a brand-new greenfield site plant. And then, you know, some of the benefits of doing the plant rebuild is the way we can phase it and do throughout the implementation. And then finally, we'll talk about what this is going to mean to the city's wastewater rates. And then after that, we'll talk about next steps. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our project manager, Will Martin.
Thanks, Gary, and good evening, council members. As Gary mentioned, my name is Will Martin. I've been the project manager for development of this facility plan. And I'll start out kind of just with some background on the goals and drivers that we came into the facility plan with. So Gary mentioned these, you know, as we've talked with the city, we understand that the wastewater plant needs to do better areas. One that I'll highlight in a second is, you know, the plant needs to be safely operable for the city's employees. The facility also needs improvements to minimize the odors that impact the community around the plant. Those are really key goals for us as we looked at needs of the facility and alternatives that we would develop to address those. Also, operational reliability is a big driver and need for the facility. As Gary mentioned, you know, the need to improve the regulatory compliance of the facility is an important driver as well. That was a focus for us as we looked at what's out there and what the alternatives would be, as well as accommodating regional growth. So we looked at, you know, what the needs are for the region to support growth, what those look like kind of over the near term and a longer term to build in a good capital plan for the alternatives that we looked at. I mentioned a second ago, you know, safety is a big driver for the city on this. As Tom mentioned, you know, a number of the structures at the plant are approaching 70 years old. In wastewater service, it can be quite degrading and corrosive. A few of the structures on the site are shown in the pictures here. The one on the furthest left is actually from last week. That's a walkway on the primary clarifiers. This is an area that experienced pretty accelerated and severe corrosion. You can see the walkway deck actually collapsed. Thankfully, there was nobody working on that particular area when that collapsed. But that is a part of the plant that plant staff are regularly working near, on top of. And so certainly, you know, these safety issues are an absolute must that need to be addressed at the facility. You can see a few other pictures around that particular process area of the plant. There's really degraded concrete that needs to be addressed and fixed as an urgent priority for the facility. But also beyond that, you know, a number of the key mechanical systems are showing their age and are in need of rehab and rehabilitation to provide more reliable operation and performance. And the city really sees that in some of the compliance challenges that the facility has faced. So certainly, what we see, you know, across the country in the plants that we work in is, you know, facility with some of these condition-related issues would really struggle to meet permit. You know, it's a credit to the city's operational staff that they do such a good job with the facility that's out there. But nonetheless, as Gary mentioned, you know, there is a significant regulatory driver for this project and improvements that need to happen at the facility. You know, there is a lot of regulatory scrutiny from IDNR at this point for the city around the wastewater operations. And that was a real priority for us as we looked at alternatives for the existing site or greenfield site was to develop ways to fix the issues that are out there. We also understood that odors are a big challenge for the facility and the wastewater operations as well. And, you know, as one of the main points of contact that, you know, the city community has with wastewater operations are odor impacts near the facilities, this is something that we looked at quite closely as part of the alternatives evaluation. We looked at this holistically, right? So there's lift stations out in the communities, in the community, I should say, in some of the neighborhoods. We looked at needs there, improvements that would need to happen, looked at odors at the treatment plant itself to understand what the sources are, how they could be controlled. And then we'll continue to work with the city around communication and outreach to communicate the good efforts that the city is going to do to improve odor emissions from your wastewater facilities. We mentioned previously, you know, one of the drivers for this project was, you know, given the age of the facility at the existing site, at this point, does it make sense for the city to just up and rebuild a new plant at a different location that would be slightly further away from developed areas? So we approached this project to give the city the information needed to go through that decision-making process. And so what I've shown here is, you know, the key parts of the project that we've been working on, kind of leading up to that siting decision. There's really three main elements that we worked with the city on. So first one is really understanding what you have at the existing site. We did that, you know, through both conversations with the plant staff, getting our people on-site to understand what's there, and then using state and federal and what we see in other communities, the way to assess the facility capacity. So that's looking at what you have. We also developed alternatives to improve the existing site and compare that to a greenfield facility. And we looked at that on a cost and non-cost basis. And the cost piece, we've been looking at current revenues and rate structures that you have for wastewater operations and capital planning to understand what these alternatives would look like, what the impacts would be to the city finances, what the impacts would be to your ratepayers across a number of customer classes, I should say. And that really leads into the siting decision that I'll talk through to kind of highlight what we saw for alternatives, what the cost impacts are, that type of thing. I'll go through in fairly high level what we saw at the existing facility. I mentioned before, you know, we really did this with a lot of depth. So both talking to all the wastewater operations staff to understand on a day-to-day basis what they see at the facility and take advantage of the experience and experience they have at the facility. We combined that with, you know, an in-depth assessment for every major discipline of equipment, structures that you have at the site there to really understand what's there, what the condition is, what type of salvageable life expectancy we could recover from those assets, combining that with state-of-the-art or state-of-the-industry assessment of how those processes work, how much capacity they truly have. And because we were comparing, you know, existing site and existing infrastructure to, you know, what would be constructed as all-new, we took a very aggressive approach to developing an alternative at the existing site. So everything we looked at was intended to be essentially new reconstruction at the facility, so it is as new a condition as you can get at that existing facility, so that it's an apples-to-apples comparison with something that would be built brand-new. So we have a very aggressive investment plan that would allow that existing facility to be comparable to something that's new. So it should not be thought of as a Band-Aid for the existing facility. This is a full reinvestment to get you an as-new facility, just happens to sit at the existing site where the wastewater plant is. On a very high level, what we saw for what's at the existing plant itself, you know, as Tom mentioned, most of the structures, most of the tanks are in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 years old, either constructed in the 1960s or 1970s. That is, you know, fairly typical for wastewater plants across the U.S. We would expect that the city's assets experience a little bit of accelerated degradation compared to facilities with less industrial loading. So the city's treatment plant sees very high-strength waste coming in, given the concentration of industries here. And with that, you see higher concentrations of corrosive gases, more aggressive conditions that tend to degrade the facilities a little bit quicker than what you'd see other places. But that being said, you know, we were a little bit surprised as we got in-depth in the facilities, there was more there that could be salvaged than I think we anticipated. A number of the really key treatment structures and tanks were in fair-to-good condition. And from what we've seen elsewhere, that is, you know, those are assets, that's concrete and steel that can be reused, rehabilitated and continue to be put in service. That was an important finding on our end. But that being said, as we highlighted in those drivers, there are still a number of major issues that need to be addressed at the plant for safety, odors, operational reliability, capacity expansion. And, you know, the broad categories of those, you know, the age of the structures and tanks, there are a few that we would not, that we would rebuild wholesale just due to, you know, age and corrosion and degradation. Tom mentioned, you know, that 30, 20 to 30-year life, that's what we expect for, you know, metallic process equipment, piping, pumps, that type of thing. The age of some of that equipment is past its useful service life, as well as in a number of key areas lacking redundancy, reliability, that type of thing. And also, you know, the supporting systems, some of the things that you don't see is apparently when you walk in a treatment plant, I mean, the tanks are visible, but really the brains, the heart of the systems, those lack some reliability and make it very difficult to operate the plant on a day-to-day basis. So some of the underground pipings in poor condition, the electrical systems that feed power to the facility and distribute it to all the systems that operate, the instrumentation and SCADA system, really the brains of the plant, all that needs a reliability upgrade to allow the operators to do their job a little bit better. So when we looked at renewing this facility, that's, those are the elements that we look to address. So we built in, you know, capacity and redundancy expansion, mechanical systems. There were a handful of areas that we specifically saw a need to upgrade the reliability of the treatment process, a handful of areas with kind of legacy design or configuration issues that needed to be brought up to modern code and design standards, as well as the odor issues that we talked about. So I'll talk for a few minutes about the alternatives that we looked at. And really, you know, the process that we went through to develop these alternatives, you know, we built on the assessment of the existing site for mostly rehab purposes to understand what needed to be fixed. But beyond that, to look at, you know, what's the right level of technology, what's the right level of treatment process that fits the city's goals. We worked closely with the wastewater utility, the operations staff, the management, understand what's the right fit in terms of the world of technologies that are out there. You know, the feedback that we had consistent from the wastewater department and wastewater utility was that, you know, tried and true is really the city's goal for the technologies that they look at. So we looked at a very, very, a set of technologies that's very proven, very reliable, accepted by regulators to use as the basis for the alternatives that we looked at. And so what I'm showing here is, you know, a plan for rebuilding the existing plant. So what you see is any of the solid orange shapes, be it rectangles or circles, those would be fully new facilities that's replacing something that's existing at the site. And then kind of the shaded orange areas, that's a structure that's getting reconditioned and repurposed for continued use of the facility. As I mentioned, you know, we are comparing this to a full new facility, so we were very aggressive in what needed to be fixed here. You can see there's a lot of orange in that, just about every process area is seeing some type of improvement, some type of upgrade to get this to be really be comparable to something that's built brand-new at a new facility. Does also include a fairly aggressive capacity expansion. I'll come back to that piece in a bit. And then that was compared against, again, a very kind of tried and true, proven treatment technology, treatment train at a greenfield site. That's what's shown here. I would say, you know, we looked at a number of different siting alternatives for these build options. This one in particular is kind of near the South Bridge Water Plant. We looked at a handful that are kind of that same kind of north-south band, kind of west from South Bridge over towards the river. That's far from the only sites we looked at. We did look at sites as far south as the power plant as well, given the sensitivity to odors and the desire to move, you know, further and further away from developed areas. But this would be configurable to, you know, a site with a different geometry, different configuration, what have you. So we looked at a lot of different siting options on that front. And we, you know, we worked with the wastewater staff to look at, I'm going to present costs in a second. I don't want you guys to think that that was the only thing under consideration. We did look at all the cost and non-cost factors associated with those alternatives to really make sure that we were giving adequate consideration to some of the benefits that would come from the greenfield versus existing site alternatives. So we went through an open and transparent process with the city staff on that front. But ultimately, what we saw is when we compared the costs of what we could do at the existing plant against the cost for a greenfield facility, really the cost was the big driver for the recommendation that was made to the city to stay at the existing site. So when we looked at that, you know, very extensive set of improvements at the existing site, the all-in cost for that alternative is a little bit less than $600 million. It's $580 million. And there's some other advantages to that. We'll talk about those in a minute. Compared to the greenfield site, which came out to a little bit under a billion dollars, so it was $900 million for construction of a fully greenfield plant built out to meet all the city's projected growth needs. So as I mentioned, we looked at costs and non-cost factors here. Obviously, that is a big cost difference to get the flow to the new facility, construct all the new tankage, that type of thing. You know, I've mentioned a couple of times, there was more infrastructure at the existing site to salvage than we anticipated. That is a big driver for the cost differential here. It does, there is a fairly extensive upgrade needed to the piping and the pump stations and everything to move the plant further south. This is even showing the South Bridge-type locations that that area gets even more expensive to go further south from there. And we also looked at, you know, the rate impacts just to understand what those two alternatives looked like. This is showing kind of an example household that uses 1,000 cubic feet per month of water usage. What's shown is gray, and gray is, you know, after a few years of inflation-based rate increases, that household would pay about $60 per month for their sewer service. Under a phased approach to implement the existing site improvements, the same household sees that jump up to about $70 a month. And then, you know, what's shown in orange there, sorry, so that's gray and dark blue are the, you know, those two alternatives. What's shown in orange, that's that full $900 million new greenfield plant that household water bill sees, you know, essentially a, what, a 50% plus increase up to $115 per month. So again, to fund that greenfield site, that's a very substantial increase for the ratepayers of Sioux City. And so again, it, you know, pointed to us that the existing site is probably the best investment for the city. I would also add, you know, we looked at a few different ways that we could try to balance what would happen at a new site versus a greenfield to see if there's any other way to phase in a greenfield. There are very limited options around that with pretty limited economic benefit. But as we looked at the existing site, there are ways to phase those improvements, prioritize what's most important to fix quickest, do those quickly, then proceed with another phase of improvements to follow those. of improvements to follow those. And then we've been able to defer some improvements for future growth that could kind of be executed as needed for the city. This phased approach has a real benefit for the city's ratepayer base. You see much less extreme rate increases early on to fund these improvements under a phased program. We're showing here, you know, the distribution of those, or the approach on phasing that we've worked with the wastewater department to develop. And again, this is about addressing key issues, key priorities first. These are mostly designed around safety, odors, reliability, to get the plant running correctly. That's followed by a second phase that gives a capacity expansion, as well as some solids upgrades. And then, as I mentioned, that third phase, we've looked closely at the growth needs that we project out over a reasonable timeframe. We think that, you know, there's a piece here that can be peeled off, executed as needed by the city if you see excess growth beyond what we project that occurs in the future. The breakdown of costs for that phased approach, so Phase 1 ends up being the largest of these three phases, that's about a $300 million project all told. That's followed by Phase 2, which is a capacity expansion, that's $170 million. And then that third phase as needed that we have included is $125 million. One of the pieces of this is, you know, we have looked closely at what this does to the capacity of the facility. And what we see is, from where the facility is now, as we complete those Phase 1 improvements, that's primarily focused on reliability upgrades, but along with that, you get about a 20% capacity expansion. At the end of Phase 2, that adds more capacity, you end up about 50% extra capacity compared to where you are now. And then at the completion of Phase 3, that's about a, not quite, but nearly 100% increase from capacity of the facility as it currently is now. And so, you know, there's some dynamics for the industrial loadings to the existing city plant, one of those being three large industries leaving for a new plant in South Sioux City. What we see is, you know, after Phase 2, where the facility ends up is, you know, capacity for what we projected out as the industrial growth needs within the service area, as well as the growth needs for the city and the sister cities, all of that, not including the industries that are leaving for the South Sioux City plant. That Phase 3 provides growth beyond that or capacity for the South Sioux City industries if they were to come back into the city's service area.
Well, just one thing to add, you see it in three phases. Phase 1 and Phase 2 are integral, it must be done, where Phase 3 is just based on economic need, just to remind.
Absolutely, thank you, Mel.
Phase 2 had a brand-new administration building.
Correct.
I mean, I know everybody likes a new building, I get that, but I'm sure you're going to have a million reasons why, but I've been there. It's as good a shape as a lot of our buildings around here.
Our existing administrative building houses our lab, and currently we're out of compliance with where the lab is at and how we're conducting our lab. It's supposed to be on the main floor, it's on the second floor, we have a lot of fire issues, fire safety issues with that, and we have a Class 1, Div 1, which is explosion issues, with it being connected to the digester building.
There are code issues, it is built under a much prior design code that we recommend.
Now, just, you don't get to sit down that easy. You're telling me it's in the wrong spot, but you're building it in the same spot. Now, something's not jiving here.
You can go.
Yeah, go back.
Yeah, it's in a different location. It's in the back there.
There, the current building, if you see the three yellow circles and the blue circle, that's where the current building is.
The existing building is right.
How much of that is this deal?
It goes like 18 million?
It is somewhere in the range of like 15 to 20 million dollars.
Can't keep some of that and just build the lab there? I mean, that's a lot of money, that absolutely has zero productivity to it.
I would invite you guys to come down and take a look.
I'm not asking you to give me your assessment, I'm asking you, do you have to build a whole building? Because 18 million is a lot of money if we can get by for building a lab.
So I would say, you know, certainly as we or whoever gets into the design of the facility, they would look for opportunities to optimize that cost. You know, we budgeted that based on what we've seen as per-square-foot costs at other charitable wastewater utilities, and that's what we see, given the size needs that you have and the costs we've seen elsewhere.
Phil didn't answer my question, but go ahead. Can you build them separate? That's my question.
In my professional opinion, I would not.
I understand that.
I may answer.
It's not your professional opinion or his, can you? That's the question.
Well, I'm sure you can build anything.
Well, I know what it can do.
I'd be curious, I guess, if you're, to the mayor's point, if you were building just a brand-new building and it was the lab, I mean, I guess you would have to rework your entire drawing because right now you have those clarified.
This is conceptual, this isn't necessarily how it's going to look.
We're going to vote on $500, $600 million here, and if we're not having this to ask questions, then I got to wonder why I came down tonight. I feel like crap to begin with, but I wanted to come here and get questions answered. I thought that was the reason for this meeting. But go ahead.
I don't, I don't think we're voting today, or...
No, this is just a presentation.
Yeah. We can always go down a road of doing the lab however...
Yeah. Because I guess my question...
When we get into the preliminary designs, which will be ahead of the actual design, we can address all these kind of issues.
Because I'd be curious, I mean, if the mayor wants to see it split, I would imagine building a new lab would be comparable, I mean, as far as how much money it would still take to do that. You're just doing it in a separate place that's in compliance, I mean, as long as then you had a new building that was in compliance, if you're building a new lab, it would probably make, it would behoove you just to put that all in one, but if that's what you would like, we can look.
We'll talk through rate impacts from the recommended alternative. You know, one of the things that we looked closely at is distribution of the burden of these costs between the city's different customer classes. As a starting point for, you know, understanding how we looked at this, there are different cost components for, you know, capital and operation of the wastewater utility. In terms of how those break down, so there's just the sheer amount of water that the wastewater plant has to treat on a daily basis. You know, on that perspective, about 60% of that comes from non-industrial, you know, domestic and commercial facilities. About 40% of that, in rough terms, comes from the city's industries. The other major cost component is the load, just the sheer mass of pollutants that the treatment plant treats before the water gets discharged to the river. From that perspective, that balance is flipped, so about like 2/3 to 3/4 of the load, just the, you know, mass of pollutants that comes to the facility, that's from the industrial sources. So as we looked at this, those were helpful framing to understand, you know, the balance of the costs that the city's going to incur for this. The current revenue makeup between those classes, it's about, it's fairly in line with flow, it's about 60% from domestic and commercial sources, the non-industrial, about 40% from industries. We looked at a few different approaches to balance the cost sharing associated with these improvements. The first one would shift most of the burden to the industries, I mean, it's 75% to the industries, 25% to the non-industrial sources. That, again, is in line with the loading, the distribution. We looked at the second approach with just equal sharing between industrial and non-industrial classes, just 50/50. A third approach with the first phase being kind of in line with flow, 60% non-industrial, 40% industrial, and then that flipping to be load-based in the second phase. And for any of these, you know, our default assumption is that, you know, state revolving loan funds will be used for financing as a low-interest loan program for water and wastewater projects. And we ended up, you know, based on what we saw, we looked at, you know, rate impacts across the different classes for these three approaches, you know, given the loading and the flow basis, given what we saw to rate impacts. Approach 2 is the one that we've proceeded forward with from here. Starting with the residential side, what we saw to get the revenue increases needed to meet or to fund the projects, what we would propose is a 20% increase in year 1, that'd be followed by a 10% increase in a second year, and then inflation-based increases that would proceed thereafter to help the city build additional revenue. I showed this previously, starting this kind of typical household that uses 1,000 cubic feet per day, or this hypothetical household that uses 1,000 cubic feet per month, sorry, would start from about $50 in the current fiscal year, that increases to about 70 at the end of this period of rate increases to fund the projects. In terms of, you know, how that compares to peer utilities across the state, we looked at, you know, a handful that we thought were similar to the city. You can see, again, these gray and darker blue bars, that's kind of where the city, from where you are now, increasing for inflation out to the end of this period, you end up, you know, in the middle of other peer utilities across the state, so you're neither low end nor the high end of what you see for other utilities. Would say, you know, we expect some of the low-end ones there to catch up as they are also having to make major capital investments in their facility to address key needs. On the industrial side, we are looking at a slightly longer period of rate increases, so instead of two-year, they would see a three-year period of rate increases. They would start with a 30% increase in the first year, 20% increases in the second and third years, and then 5% increases for inflation thereafter. And kind of similarly, what we saw as we looked at peer utilities across the state and the region, you can see in the gray line there, that's, you know, current city rates for, this is basically showing like a large industry with fairly high strength, high-strength discharges coming to the city treatment plant. You are very much currently on the low end of peer utilities across the state. We are proposing increases for those industrial facilities, but they end up, you know, in the mid-range of peer utilities. Again, same caveat that we expect, you know, that other utilities are going to catch up to you over time as they implement their capital programs as well. Talk briefly about next steps. On the facility plan itself, I mentioned, you know, the sighting decision was the, kind of the key point for this project. I highlighted some of the alternatives evaluation that we went through. From here, we are working on finalizing the facility plan. As Tom mentioned, that's a regulatory submittal to unlock access to the financing. We're also proceeding with regulatory submittals as part of that process, that's ongoing, and we're working with Tom and his team to finalize those. And then from the facility plan finalization, it would proceed into engineering design of the improvements. The improvements, especially Phase 1, are fairly intricate in terms of maintaining the plant, the existing plant, running, meeting permit during construction, there's a number of pieces that have to be kind of constructed in sequence with each other. So we project out that that finishes around 2030, but I would add, this is a preliminary schedule, and we are looking and going to look at ways to accelerate. We would also prioritize the really most critical systems that need to get fixed and rebuilt, those would be mandated that the contractor has to do those first and get those up and running. That'd be followed by Phase 2 to start immediately and proceed thereafter with about like a three- to four-year construction period for that project. So with that, I think we'll make questions from anyone who has them.
When was the SCADA, we just replaced that not very long ago.
Is that in the machine?
Didn't we?
We believe that was the water plant that was just replaced it. I've been at the wastewater plant since 2014, and there's been no upgrades to the SCADA system.
Okay. You have inflationary dollars built into the construction, or is that your best guess today?
We have quite a bit of inflation built in to reflect the, what we've seen as the market conditions over the past couple of years. It's something that we looked very closely at for our cost estimates because we know it's a huge driver for construction costs recently.
They're probably going to be a challenge to guess where it could go.
We, you know, use numbers that we thought were conservative without being overboard. And...
You're not the first gentleman or lady to stand at that mic and tell me how you're going to increase our capacity. I think it's terribly important that you put that in your contract, because we spent $140 million bucks around here, and as near as I can tell, we got nothing for that $140 million. And that's what's so aggravating, the stuff that we did in the last 10, 12, 14 years around here. I mean, it's just, it's unacceptable, and, you know, I know, Tom's told me how you're different than everybody else, I'm going to hope you are, because it's just difficult to spend this kind of money knowing what we spent. You guys tell me, well, most of that's not what we should have done. Well, how do we know you're right today? I want to make sure that when you're done, you're signing that you're going to increase this capacity, because you're coming up with the design, you're letting the bids, you're approving the contracts, alls we're doing is writing checks. So at the end of the day, somebody needs to write a check back to the city if, in fact, we don't get increased capacity.
Mayor, to kind of address that, that gets back to one of the things you said at the beginning, is that we're going with a tried, intrude, and accepted treatment process. If you recall, the rehab done in whenever, early 2000s, they tried to implement an MLE process that's never been accepted by the state of Iowa. This is going back to something that's pre-approved by the state of Iowa.
Then there shouldn't be any difficulties, they're going to increase our capacity. Should there?
When we put out the RFP to solicit a consultant for this design, preliminary design, I don't see any problem putting that in there.
Good. Because I don't want to sit here in four, well, it won't matter, but somebody's going to sit here in four or five years and say, geez, where's our increased capacity?
Yeah, I don't want to be sitting here not having that either.
I guarantee you don't want to be if I'm still here, because this is, this will be like the third time that we've been told that, and it never, ever happens. And it's unacceptable to the rate payers of this community to have it happen again.
Yeah, Mayor, we certainly understand the frustration. Obviously, we haven't been involved in past projects, so it's hard for us to comment on that. But what I will say is, you see that these costs we're presenting are obviously significantly higher than what you've paid for work in the past. And I'm, again, I'm not commenting on anything that was done in the past, but these costs are based on doing this upgrade the right way, considering lifecycle costs, considering the type of environment that this is in, your high industrial load, all those factors into this, and that's, in addition to factoring in inflation, that's why these costs are so high. But again, it's a long-term investment for the city to do it the right way.
At what point does the regulatory agency approve what we're doing? Is that a sign-off on the plan, or is that a continual monitoring of the progress we're making?
We'll first start off with the preliminary engineering report, go from there, then once the city's okay with that, we'll go into final design. Once we hit a certain point, it's usually about 90% design, they'll submit it to the DNR. But the DNR, they require that we follow their wastewater standard guidelines for designing this plant. So MLE process is not in that standard. So we won't be going down a road that's not already in the design criteria. So we'll be using their math that they require for sizing things, we'll be using their accepted treatment processes when we go down and start selecting for treatment processes. So there really shouldn't be a big holdup. And then the whole time, we'll be working with the Iowa DNR. Right now, the leader of our plant, his name's Terry Kirschman, when Hazen and I, the city, I should say, we've been developing a really good relationship, so much so that when we submitted our wasteload allocation, which is a part of this whole process, typically that takes 90, 60 to 90 days to hear back. We got ours back in a week. So, I mean, the state's really working well with us, at least on the DNR side.
But you can't deny the fact that the state approved your construction for the 140, they did.
Correct. Yep, but they did not...
They approved it, they just didn't give you any more capacity.
Correct.
So that...
We'll be going hand-in-hand with the... We'll be going hand-in-hand with, with the, basically, our design will go right along with our capacity needs. We'll be working with the DNR to ensure that we're doing what we are designing, will actually get us those. We're not going to even go into designing something if we don't expect capacity or whatever that process is. If we're not expecting the outcome, then we'll go down a different avenue.
What is MLE?
It stands for Modified Ludzek-Eddinger. It's a process developed out of South Africa for treating out nitrogen from the wastewater. We all, we have to treat nitrogen and phosphorus, so we have to look at another process that is approved, and we're using three-stage biological nutrient removal for that process, which is already approved by the DNR.
There are various definitions of capacity. When we talk about capacity, what are we really referring to there? Because didn't we have, didn't the regulations change over the years about what can be dumped in and what cannot be? Wasn't that with the grease and...
Yep, there's all different criteria, and state of Iowa's kind of unique from a lot of different states in the country. There's a few of us states that the DNR actually puts a, basically, if you will, boilerplate on the front of your facility. You can only accept this much flow, this much BOD, this much TSS, this much TKN. Our state requires that we don't go over those limits. Most states don't have that. As long as you're effluent, the treated wastewater out of the back is meeting their limits, then they, they don't really care what you put into it. But our state does.
We talked capacities, we're basically talking flow in, flow in, and then load. Flow is just what comes in the plant, load is what's in the flow.
So, yeah.
That's where you get into your BOD and TSS. We have limits on that, or capacity limits on that, but flow is just like the liquid that comes in. We also have a limit on that, too.
But that's changed over time, hasn't it?
The things, I think, the things that are in the load have changed and become more regulated, but...
Such as TKN.
TKN, ammonia.
So we've, we've gotten capacities now for total nitrogen and total phosphor. We just got that last, last year, early, early 2021. So, yeah, they're adding things all the time. But what you might be referring to is, on the back end, they are getting the, the limits are getting more tighter and tighter and tighter. So, you know, twenty years ago, the limits for BOD might have been fifty, and now they're thirty. And in the future, they're probably going to go down to twenty, ten. So, you know, it gets more stringent as time passes, especially for wastewater plants.
So Phase One is done in 2030. How many years does this buy us?
Phase One, or the Phase One and Two?
Just talking Phase One for now, from 2030.
I'm going to step in. I don't think you can just look at Phase One, because Phase One and Phase Two are integral. They're actually Phase One A and One B. You can't do...
Fair enough. Twenty thirty-three, Phase Two is done.
Yeah.
How many years does this buy us?
So, pretty much by 2033, which is nearly ten years from now, we will be in construction, probably completing construction, but, you know, we'll run the plant for another five years, and then we'll, we'll have to start a facility plan again, just think about the next...
But Tom, I think what he's asking is the life, what's the life of, in 2033, after we're completed Phase Two, how many years can we expect to get out of that plant?
Twenty to thirty years.
Twenty to thirty years.
Yep.
And it depends, you know, so, so the structures have a much longer life expectancy. Again, the plan is to bring the concrete structures up to like-new conditions. It's, it's the mechanical equipment that's having the twenty-to-thirty-year lifespan, sometimes it's less, given your such high industrial loadings that you have here, particularly at the head end of the plant, the corrosive environments in that equipment, so, but, you know, certainly for equipment, twenty to thirty years, structure's even longer than that. But, you know, this kind of ties into the Phase Three as well, because it really depends on what growth occurs. But as Tom said, the plan would be to revisit the facility plan as Phase Two ends, to reassess where are you now with the plan and with the flows and loads that are coming in at that time, to determine if a Phase Three is needed, and if so, what would that look like?
So let's say we...
One more thing. The other thing built into the rate model is a reserve for replacement of equipment as time, so that we don't get twenty years in and everything fails all at the same time. We've got a reserve for equipment replacement built into the, into the rates.
And that's basically to protect the investment that the city's made, so that you don't, you're not in this spot again at some point down the road.
The last thing we want to do is not do anything for thirty years and come back and do a steep hike again and, and start this over.
So recapturing some of that lost industrial business, potentially lost industrial business, I know that there's, there's one that we've talked about before, that you had concerns about whether or not we'd be able to treat at that capacity ever. Does this Phase Three include like the Geledas of the world?
Oh, definitely. So if, if we get a large or medium-sized or even a smaller-sized industry, and we're at full capacity, and we're at, we're pleaded with Phase Two, this will allow us to pull the trigger to, to accommodate an industry if they want to come to town. Right now, we can't accommodate that. We have, we have to fix everything first before we can even think about getting to that, that part.
And I think, too, looking at longevity, it's somewhat speculative or just pure speculation. You don't know what type of industry we'll be supporting at that point in time, where they'll be, what they'll be doing, what's coming in. I mean, we're just trying to build for the future. And I think, to the mayor's point, you want to make a sound investment in that. You want to get the bang for your buck, because especially, I mean, one thing that I'm really cognizant of is that it's on the backs of our ratepayers, and it does make a significant impact in their pocketbook. So you want to make sure that you are making a wise investment. And I think, you know, I wasn't sitting in this seat back then, but I think when you get burned, you know, and you don't get that investment, or you don't get that return on that investment, I think that can be a tough pill to swallow, especially when we're looking at a steep price tag the way we are now. I mean, I appreciate the thorough nature of what the process has been, and you guys keeping us abreast of what's happening, but it's, it's also a tough decision at the end of the day, because a lot of people see those rate increases, and it can be worrisome, especially in today's environment. Gosh, you look at construct, construction costs, inflation costs, I mean, everyone's kind of feeling it. So, I mean, I understand the mayor's concern.
Those are very good points.
Do you see any impact, favorable impact to ratepayers with the ongoing maintenance costs that we've been having, where that would be significantly lowered? And would that have an impact on rates?
You know, I, I think with the built-in adjustments to accommodate increased operational and increased capital inputs, if that were to happen, I, I think the way that it's set up, we, we won't have to come back to do a rate increase to fix something. We'll, we'll have the, the pocketbook to do that.
Yeah, with, with those additional three percent or inflation-based increases that would occur in fiscal year 2026 and be, that would cover basically maintaining the plant, replacing certain equipment if needed, things like that, basically protecting your investment.
Operationally, the, you know, the, one of our main electrical-using pieces of equipment are, are blowers, and they're, we operate four of them. We have, we, yeah, we've got about four of them right now online, and they're all, they're each nine hundred horsepower. And they're, they're, they're pretty much original to the plant, they're from the seventies and eighties. They aren't designed, like, we have our new furnaces that are ninety percent efficient, ninety-nine percent efficient. These newer blowers and newer types of equipment, they are more efficient. So we expect our electricity use to go at least down comparable to what we're doing today. Yep. And hopefully, maintenance costs, we're driving, we're putting a lot of money into the processes that are failing now, because we have to go in so often to fix them, and we have to buy parts nonstop. With the new equipment and the newer technologies, we, we would highly expect to not have to dump so much money into a, a, systems that are, you know, five, six, ten years old as compared to a sixty-year-old system.
Tom, it will come to no surprise to you of how much I worry about our environment and sustainability. What are your thoughts on this plant and this structure of, or this layout of what we have? I mean, what are we able to, I mean, are we still capturing the gas and cycling that in? Are there other opportunities you and I have talked about? You know, what can we do with different solids to be able to sell those or partner with companies that would offload those for us? I mean, talk to me about some of the things that you think are innovative here, and I guess the reason that I think about that is not only because I try to be environmentally conscious, but I also think that, I, I think the more investment you make in green energy, the more you're applying yourself into those fields, the more attractive you are to different businesses and industries. People want to relocate to come, or to, to cities that have that in mind. Companies are looking for that. They're thinking about their, their footprint. Talk to me about what you think some of these innovations are going to be that are going to make us attractive, or, and, I mean, I think that it's mutually beneficial. It's not only good for the environment, but oftentimes, then you're saving money or making money on what you have. I mean, are we going to continue some of those programs, and what do we hope to expand them with this investment?
Yeah, that's a great question, and, you know, the other day, we're, myself and the Hazen team, we're talking about this. And talking with Dan, he made a good comment. We got to, we got to walk before we run, and we're not even there yet. I mean, we got to get our facility at least running to the point where we can...
Yeah, and in compliance and everything else. I mean, I get that. I think I'm just thinking to the mayor's point that he made earlier. You know, you have to think far ahead, and I'm just trying to think that what are we doing strategically that's setting ourselves up? I get compliance, I get making sure that we have the right processes, but it's also like, I've, I've thought some of the things that we're doing already are very attractive, and we need, and you know this, we need to lean into them. I mean, we're talking about solar, we're talking about other ways to make it just a more sustainable project. I just...
That kind of falls more into when we get into preliminary design, giving marching orders to the design engineers that we want solar panels to provide electricity and those things. Staff is all for them. We just, it's a little early in the process to start thinking about implementing those things, and we're having them get a design engineer yet.
So when, when we put this out for RFP to solicit consultants, a part of that RFP will have, you know, different things. One of them will be how to get to net energy zero. So that's a goal, that's a long-term goal, not a short-term goal. But we definitely want to get to that point where we're, we're at least producing enough energy, whether we're injecting it into the pipeline or not, that to offset our own usage.
Yeah.
We're also looking at, right now, we're almost ninety percent design completed on a high-strength waste-receiving system, and converting to basically holding tanks into digester reactors. So when we do that, we will be able to take in more high-strength waste, that'll allow us to produce more biogas, renewable gas. We're also talking with a company called American Infrastructures Holding to process our biosolids, and we're, we're, we just started that conversation again with them, knowing where we are with the facility plan, knowing that we don't have the capital to put in dryers and to, to go to that, just make Class A sludge. So we are looking for partners to do that.
And I think there are cities already making pledges to go to net zero and what it would take there, and I think that, I'm not proposing that or saying we have to, I just, obviously, I'm a proponent of some of those, taking those steps. And I think if we're not having the conversation now, if we're not being intentional about that, sometimes you miss the mark, or you get down the line, and then you're like, gosh, I wish we would have thought about that and pushed that more. So I just want to try to keep it top of mind, and sometimes saying things behind a microphone and making it a little more official makes, it means more than just saying it in an office. So I appreciate it.
Yep, it's noted, and I think we're all on the same page with that.
That's right. As long as we're all on board for the, whatever the cost would be to do those kind of things, I mean, they do come with a price.
Definitely.
And we'll have to, it's a balancing act.
Yep, it's a capital balancing with operational cost.
Be very careful as we move...
I think it's a good point, Dan, and certainly, Alex, appreciate your comments. I know when we start a, a design of a facility improvement, you know, being aware of sustainability aspects and, and kind of starting with that in mind is certainly something that we'll, we would need to be aware of if we were to, to do the design. But also, there is, you know, thinking about that return on investment, you know, the lifecycle costs associated with that, so.
And then I will add, already built into the, to the idea behind what we're doing here is, you know, three-stage BNR, which is the main process, the aerobic process to treat most of the pollutants. We're, we're going to produce a way higher quality effluent compared to what we do now. We'll be a lot lower under our limits, hopefully lower under our limits that we get maybe in fifty years, because this is a generational project. We want this to last a long time. Like we said, the mechanical aspects might have to be replaced in twenty years, but as long as we stay on top of it, it's not going to be such a burden to our ratepayers.
Thanks for the presentation. It's well done.
So in terms, one last question, I promise. In terms of, of making this future, we're looking to the future, possible regulatory changes, do we have room to grow still at this site? It seems like we're, we're getting a little cramped there. Do you think that there is still some potential growth that could happen should any regulatory...
We, we didn't look at that. Tom mentioned, you know, three-stage is the basis for all this at the heart of the process. The next level beyond that's five-stage to get to...
Are you talking maybe area of the plant?
Yeah.
Footprint-wise?
Yep. We looked at both, you know, the additional space you would need to do that reconfiguration, and, you know, we essentially doubled current capacity as what we saw as future growth. So that's another seaboard triumph, that's thirty years of projected residential growth in the city and sister cities, and the Sausue City Industries come back from the Sausue plant. So it's about as much reasonable growth projection as we could build in, and you still had excess space at this site. There is a lot of area there.
Working in a number of utilities across the country that have urban treatment plants, you know, certainly a lot of precedent for, for putting a, a lot of treatment capacity in a small footprint. So there's different ways we can leverage existing tankage.
It was actually kind of nice to see that the surprise you had is that we can salvage a lot of what we do have existing.
Well, our, our approach is always leverage existing assets first, you know, and so, you know, again, we had our structural engineers do a pretty deep dive on the existing tankage and, you know, really, to try to understand, you know, what could be used and what couldn't, because that's, again, in thinking, that's where the big capital costs are, is, is building new tankage.
We adjourned, thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate your hospitality.
Shaner?
Hi. Whose name it was?
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Okay.